We have ponds upstairs.
Where? There aren't that many ponds we'll get in the wrong year.
Well, sure there are.
Where?
Which area? McKinley Avenue? There is hydrant, where down at the foot of McKinley Avenue? Not part of the, uh, fire district.
Since rain it's due to the
The solution that you're present, so the problem you're presenting is so simple versus the situation that we had, I don't even find it worth arguing.
What is your solution, sir?
Put a little sand pipe down there and tie it into the pond.
There is a sand pipe to the pond, sir.
Sure, and bring it over to that corner of the road. It's a very simple thing.
Could also add up to the fire department challenge.
Sure.
But that's not up to me.
Timmy, wouldn't draft that finally?
Probably not.
You couldn't phone up too?
Yeah, I know that, but these people wouldn't realize that and they, they're not, they're not concerned.
You couldn't draft this rule because the pond is higher than that part of the road.
You're comparing every big problem we had to a situation that happens once in every five years.
Hell, just burn every day, sir.
There hasn't been one in ours, if I had got, for the last ten years. But what about our situation every day that we have to consist with?
Have to consist with everything on two things.
And versus, it's, it's hopeless to
That pond is higher than that part of the road. You can draw that water over there.
You could with an up engine.
One engine will do it.
Yeah, but I don't think we should put all this pressure on Tim. I mean, it's not just for the, uh, fire department that we were concerned about.
No, he's the only one just representing the fire department.
No, but the road commissioner was also concerned about making that a one-way street and so. Um, I did, I did talk to Karen Prescott, who was in charge of the school bus routing for the, for the town and, uh, she, she, uh, was nice enough to come here tonight to explain what the school bus concerns would be and I would ask her if she'd like to.
Presently, uh, the bus does go down East Proctor Road, picks up approximately fourteen children right on that route, then it pulls out onto Route Three heading north. Goes another few miles until it can turn around in Proctor and then heads south and picks up two more families. That bus already exceeds, uh, what the State Department recommends for allotted time for elementary school children on a bus. Um, kids can be on that bus upwards of fifteen minutes. By cutting off that, um, that road to let us to turn around, um, we're tacking on a significant amount of time to the bus that would have to go back and either head west to go on to Route Three and do a parallel run and then backtrack, or have to go east, which to me is, is not a good situation at all. Just pulling a car out to go east on West Street is very difficult. I would not recommend that a school bus try to pull out and head up that way. I don't know if sidewalks or if there's any way that, um, fire trucks or school buses or whatever can have access to, um, the highway. I don't know what the answer is. You do have a tough situation on that road. I know I've driven it many times. I don't know what the answer is, but I know that the bus would definitely be impacted.
Fifty-one people signification that are concerned over our problems. Seems everyone else is concerned about their minor problems that happen occasionally.
Well, the bus travels at a hundred and seventy-five days.
How many minutes would it be, what involves going down Route Three?
I'd have to write, would depend on, on which route we, we sent the bus, whether it was going, um, east or west, but it could tack on upwards of ten minutes. And for students that have already been sitting on that for fifty minutes, which like I said exceeds what's recommended, I'd hate to be sitting on the bus for an hour. It's just, it's not safe for the kids.
Is it safe for the kids that are playing on the road all day long?
No, I agree, you've got a problem.
Young parents on the road with their kids?
No, you've got a problem. I'm just telling you what, how it impacts the school bus.
No, that's fair enough.
Ronnie, you can't put up a no two traffic signs and kind of enforce it?
No, that, we thought that would be the easy answer and it may very well could have been, but from what I understand, we've contacted the agency of transportation, we're allowed to post highways by speed, which we have done, or by weight, which we have also done. Those are our only options.
How about if How about if, uh, where Route Three and Route Four intersect, it would have stoplights? Is there any way that the state of Vermont could allow the town, like for about a month, just to have it stop from the Proctor Road and have it on caution on Route Four? And just see if the people that live in Proctor, because they are the ones that really use our little shortcut, if they could see that it would save them maybe a few seconds by just having a caution there, or having to stop for them by having a caution.
Rather than a full cycling light coming in now? I'm not sure.
Would the state maybe go along with something like that for a month on trial basis?
It's a letter in the packet where the state, uh, was asked to look at this and they said the timing of the light, the longest is seventy, I think, seventy to seventy-five seconds. Shortest cycle is thirty. And, um, Mr. Jarvis didn't think a few seconds to the light, one way or the other, was going to make much of a difference as to people's desire to go up East Proctor Road. But they will study it, uh, do a more in-depth survey, but the initial, um, response was it doesn't look like a few seconds will make much difference. That's the district highway.
What, what the problem really is, is like during the, the rush hours, people coming from Proctor, and there is a line at that traffic light there. And that's why they take the little shortcut. Because they just hate sitting in that line.
A lot of them race, I walk every single night and I'm even afraid to tell them to stop for fear of beer bottles, something's going to come flying in. So I can attest, just tonight walking, five cars came from the East Proctor Road as a shortcut, and it's at night. And, and a lot of them, what they're doing is they're racing each other out. One car is going one way and one's going on East Proctor Road. See who can get to the bottom first. And that happens a lot at night.
Discussion, in, in some discussion, it was mentioned a possibility of making that a one-way street.
But then it would be hard for, I mean
Then everybody would be going out the north end.
Yeah, that would really suck.
But you would have nobody coming in from Proctor.
Then we'd have the stoplight problem. We'd be waiting at the stoplight.
That's right.
It would just add more people to it. What about a stoplight on our street that'd be effective in any way?
On which end, George? The upper end?
This end.
This end.
So, so there'd be a stoplight on, on the main Route Three in our road. So there'd be no advantage for them to, uh, come our way.
Or, or making that caution, then that's another light.
Uh, caution, I don't think caution would
No, on the other end.
I don't think the state would go along with putting a traffic light back.
I don't disagree, that might not, you know, be part of a, of a solution, but I don't think the state would approve it.
Unfortunately, on, on US routes like that, we don't have a whole lot of control over signal rating. That's left up to the, uh, state of Vermont.
No, no possibility of a sidewalk or?
Well, there are sidewalks.
There is for certain ways.
It just goes, what, three houses up?
That's all.
From the, from the lower end.
Yeah, goes by our house and that's it.
Cause that's how far I'd love it to.
Is it goes by yours, that's it?
Uh, yeah, the next house off, Rodney, that's it.
Couldn't put some type of a gate up there where it could be accessible to the
Fire department and they have the swing gate.
I don't think the bus driver would leave the bus open and get back on.
If you had a remote.
You have a remote.
Yeah, yeah, I've heard tell of, of what they would do.
That would be a solution, a gate with a remote.
No problem with that.
Now, there would sound, a lot of sound, it sounds feasible.
They have them in the nature.
A lot of states have them.
What do you think of that because of the money?
Money's always, uh, considered. A pleasure aboard, uh, anybody else that has, would like to raise any issues on, regarding that particular road? What do you think? Want to look at that?
Yeah, doesn't need to look.
Solution, I suppose.
If the solution doesn't do the way to go.
All right, once you, uh, I don't know how soon we can get an answer for it, but we'd like to take, maybe take a look at that. There's a possible solution and, uh
We could accept that.
That would be great.
See what comes up, but it's probably cheaper than reconstructing or constructing sidewalks on both sides of the road.
Sidewalks isn't, that isn't going to cure the speeding problem.
And that will never go away.
Okay, well, let's, uh, we'll investigate it and, uh, hopefully we can have something, you know, in the next two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Is there anybody else I've got on the agenda that I've got waiting?
Hi, Mike.
Hi. Thank you.
Just a, just a brief, uh, presentation. My, my name is Mike Biani. I'm employed by Casella Waste Management and, um, I talked with Joe, who invited me to the meeting to maybe express, um, Casella's interest in submitting to the board or working with the board, uh, something where Casella might be able to provide recycling and, and solid waste transportation and disposal services in view of the, the beautiful, uh, transportation recycling center that the, that the town just, uh, just built that, uh, I had the pleasure of, of walking through and touring, uh, uh, last week and, um, you've done, you've been commended, you've done a great job. It's a beautiful facility. And the reason I'm here is to express Casella's desire and, uh, perhaps playing a role in working with the town to see that you maximize the return that you've made, uh, or the investment that you've made in that facility and, and maximize the return that you get in terms of minimizing your cost for solid waste disposal and, and maximizing return on recyclables. Um, I'm not really prepared tonight to give any, any figures publicly. I wasn't really sure what, uh, what the ground rules are, if any, with regards to different haulers that might be interested in providing services to you. Um, I did want to, I mean, I, I feel that everybody here is probably, um, familiar with Casella and who the company is, but with specific, uh, application to your facility, um, I think it's important to bear in mind that, uh, we've been in the business a long time. Um, we've been in the business for twenty years. We've done solid waste management, we've done recycling. We kind of feel that we pioneered recycling in the state and, and we kind of, uh, I guess paid for it in the early years when, uh, no one was making money and, uh, we had to really struggle to survive in the world of recycling. Things are a little bit different these days and, uh, with recycling, uh, becoming more popular, uh, and, uh, more people taking part in recycling and, and more and better markets becoming, uh, developed over time. Casella, uh, wants to become involved in, in pushing out programs to communities like yours where we're able to, uh, rebate, if you will, revenues that the markets are paying for recyclables these days. And it's only fairly recently, and I think Mr. Allicky can, uh, can attest to that as well, that, that only fairly recently have the markets been so strong, uh, for such a period of time with prices they're paying for recyclables that, that haulers are able to, um, you know, package programs where we can get some of this money back to the communities.
That's what basically we're looking for.
And that's what we're interested in.
I asked Joe to contact as many of, uh, and as many individuals such as yourself, Kevin, whoever is in that business, to see if we do have a potential return on, uh, our investment up there regarding, uh, getting paid for the recyclable materials we'd be collecting. And, uh, if nothing else, at least breaking even, not, not being a liability to us. What you've told me so far sounds pretty good. I mean, there, there could be a return and that's what we're looking for. And, uh, we appreciate you coming in.
Okay, can you, can you enlighten me as to, um, I, I guess the process, if there is one, from here on in? I mean, I'd like to, I'd like, I'd like to create a level playing field if, if we can and
Well, it's, I'm not entirely sure. I mean, we plan on opening that facility, um, a week from tomorrow. It'll be a Wednesday, a typically slow day for us to give us a chance to adjust to the, to the, to the building as, as well as, as the public. And we will be doing, uh, required sorting of recyclable materials in, in the large forty-yard containers. Some are petitioned off for the smaller return items and a full container for the larger ones. And we, we have a compactor, uh, which we haven't had before, uh, the compact, um, trash, general trash. We'll be looking to dispose of that, so we'll be looking for hauler and a tipping fee, um, proposal on that. And also proposals on the recyclables as the containers become full.
Okay. Is there a deadline within which you would like that proposal? I mean, it's got to be fairly quick, I think, if you're looking to make a decision.
Yeah, I think within the next, uh, I know, we, we won't fill those in two weeks.
Well, I'm talking to Kevin, though, who quite took time to pull this all together, so.
I think two weeks is safe.
Especially get some activity from the commercial sector.
I really don't anticipate that. We're looking at around the ninth of January. We're going to open the sixth, we won't fill by the ninth. So if we could get something, not only for you gentlemen, but anyone else certainly that wants to get involved, we would appreciate it.
Sixth is right. Sixth is right, yeah?
All right, we're open the fourth, I think.
No, we're open the third.
Fourth, isn't it?
Fourth should be Wednesday? We have fourth, we have a meeting on the ninth of January, so.
But it'll be several weeks of one of those, of one of those containers of oil.
They're, they're large containers.
Yeah, forty yards, a lot of cubic
Well, that's what we found, it's one marketable in volume.
Oh, you did it right, you did it right.
Trash cans, well, because they don't, you know, it isn't worth the trip.
And you're minimizing the number of hauls that you got to make, which is good too.
You've got forty yards of, of green glass and you've probably got something to dispose of, other things similar. Okay, so maybe in a couple weeks.
People have been asking, like, glass, you know, when you start to throw that down in the container. You accept all broken bottles and everything?
Yeah, as long as the colors are segregated, you don't co-mingle the colors of the flint, the green, the brown. Um, I don't know if you'd want to fill a full forty-yard or full of glass if it's being crushed, uh, you'd be overloaded. There's certain containers like glass, thirty or below, you get eighteen ton in a thirty-yard or crushed. There's going to be a little education for, you know, we'd be happy to help you along there.
Yeah, we, uh, this is what we all do to us.
You can guarantee it won't cost you any money for, now that you got a tenant, you got your system set up there for recyclables. It'd be, if, break even, if, if not, payback.
Anybody that hasn't had a chance, uh, yeah, try to get up there before it's, uh, open. It turned out to be a real nice project. And, uh, it's very usable and I hope, uh, people appreciate and have some patience with us until we get the thing fully operational. It's, uh, it's a nice facility.
And organized.
Well, it's a nice facility. Kevin, do you have anything else?
Well, that's, that's what I was, information I was looking for is how to present our proposal and come through informational.
Very good. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I don't have anything. Just to say that, we've been in phones and, uh, we've been, uh, a lot, we've seen and Kip was there and I agree, everything seems to function real well so far and you'll find out as we start using it, but they feel pretty good about it, the way it's set up.
Hi. If we could go back to the beginning of the agenda, I thank everybody for the patience that's here. Questions on the floor? Kevin? You know, how is a health officer or a building inspector report? The marshal's not here, did you leave any?
No, I wasn't, I, I
Recreation, Karen or anyone? No? Charlie, planning commission?
Not much. You, uh, read in the paper about our town plan that went to the full regional commission.
Yeah, it's good news.
Yep, uh, there's sixteen member towns that voted on it. And, uh, they all voted in the affirmative and with no condition, so they, they accepted the plan as presented. So, I just wanted to report that there was sixteen towns out of twenty-four that, that attended, they voted and they all voted in the affirmative. That's all I have.
We were about to set a date meeting with the planning commission to go over the, uh, zoning draft. Much to pleasure. January can get rather busy. We've got, uh, budget separation coming up, so I would advise do it earlier in the month rather than later.
Planning commission's schedule's up there.
Yeah, I can see that. They have a meeting on the fifth and also the nineteenth. Is there any date that you, uh, find more acceptable to your schedules or whatever? What do you think, uh?
Something like everything, yeah?
Kevin?
Nineteenth probably better than the fifth, they've got a few items scheduled.
Nineteenth, yeah.
Nineteenth, so does?
You'll be gone. Maybe I'll stay. Maybe I'll cancel.
No.
You'll be crazy. Maybe I'll cancel.
You'll be gone.
You know, due to economic conditions, I may not be able to go this year.
The weather's bad, you don't need to go Florida.
That's right. That's what my wife told me, telling me. Weather's good, stay home.
That's what you say about your wife, because they're taping it.
Okay, let's, let's set it for the nineteenth, uh, tentative, right now.
I'll let you know.
If that's acceptable to the planning commission and, uh, we'll meet with them, go over the zoning document.
Uh, regional planning, David's not here. You got anything else, by the way?
No.
Nope.
Uh, no bypass, uh, committee, Joe?
Let, let Tim go ahead.
Oh, sure.
Oh, I'm okay. Okay, I've got it.
Don't beat on them up.
No, it's all right, Ken.
First item I have, I think you have a copy in your packet.
Yeah.
I'm not sure though, because it came in late. It's from, uh, TST Management Incorporated from New Hampshire. Had the Santa, I don't think I'll do that. It's for a maintenance contract on the new compactor.
Oh, no, you talked to me about that.
Okay, this came in late then. What we have here is a proposal, it's for seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty-two cents. It will involve a change of oil, which is twenty-five gallons, um, a filter, trays and all the other stuff that goes along. There's a disposal charge to get rid of the oil that's in the compactor. They'll come by twice a year, spring and fall, and it's eighteen cents per gallon. I think they figured it costs five dollars to, um, pay to ship the used oil away. Talking to Greg Kepler, he would recommend that you sign a agreement like this. The other thing is, if anyone's interested, I think it is, um, it's either tomorrow or Thursday, I'll, I'll double check. We're going to have training on the compactor up at the new, uh, facility. The service representative is part of the deal that the town buy. You bought a half a day of training. So Willie and Tony will get, um, educated. If anybody has any questions and wants to go, I suggest you go. And at that time, we could find out more about
Is there a service, a service contract on that for a certain length of time?
Well, they're proposing
No, I'm not, not counting that one there.
I wouldn't know, Kip, but I'd have to talk to Greg. I kind, I kind of think there isn't because this just came in for the, the coming year.
You bought something that, without any
We may have, I'll have to check and let you know, I don't know.
Should be at least a year on it.
I think there's a warranty, but I think anything, in order for a warranty to be enforced, you have to do a certain amount of maintenance to do that. No, no one's always had that protection.
But the price is, like I said, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars.
I think it would be money well spent over the course of the years, keep that full property maintained. You don't think so, get a hydraulic piston rebuilt somewhere today and find out what it costs?
Should we, um, even a small one?
Yeah, even a small one.
If, if you're in agreement, Rod could sign this to Seating and I could
This is for, like a service contract?
Yeah, they come in every year and make sure it's properly serviced.
Should we first, should you first see if there isn't some type of a warranty? I never heard of those, but I was like that and I hadn't seen
That's right.
And then that would, that would take over when the warranty
You want to just look at that, Rod?
Yeah.
It came in after
You buy a car and they don't, you buy a new car and they don't service it?
No, no.
No, he's not talking, sorry, he's talking repairing. This is repairs, nothing else.
Well, he's talking service, general maintenance service.
He's talking repairing a piston, he said.
We got mechanics.
That's further than, uh, right?
What it does is they replace twenty-five gallons of oil, one suction filter, they reset the relays, check control structures, set pressures, check the limit of the switches, check all safety mechanisms, check the oil sensor and check the oil drop pan. Okay, that's maintenance, has nothing to do with warranty. If you shouldn't do this, you might find you don't have a warranty.
Mm-hmm. Who does that?
They would, this first, eight hundred dollars a year.
It's a company in New Hampshire that we buy?
Uh, TST Management Dome in New Hampshire.
Is it just a once a year thing they do?
Twice a year.
Twice a year for this, for the total?
That's not too bad then.
I wonder who does Casella's?
They may very well do their own because they're involved in several compactors around, a number of compactors around the state. So they might have someone that goes right out there and services them, I don't know.
If we're not familiar with it, it's better to have them service it. However, Joe, I would check and see what the warranty is in that stuff.
Okay, simple.
You want, want this signed in, gentlemen?
Oh, sure, if it's a service contract. We don't know how to service it. Did you take it up with, with those guys up there, Joe? They, they didn't want any part of this, did they?
Who's that?
It's all me.
As far as this goes?
Yeah.
Well, I haven't talked to them, but
Nah, I think, I think you better That's all these people do, you better get it done.
It's a year-to-year contract, so
Like I said, if you have a, if something leaking, we could have a real problem with that.
It might not hurt to call somebody like Casella's and ask them who they have. Maybe they have somebody else that we can get them to bid for or something.
You would have the price, you know.
Could be.
Is this the company that sold it?
No, you want to hold this now? Let's sign it.
Well, that's all, you signed it, okay, he signed it, Joe. And why don't you just check with, with them and see if there's a big difference or something?
Okay.
Who sold that to us?
T, um, it's right there.
TST?
They sold it to us?
We bought it directly, Charlie, rather than have
Yeah, are they the ones proposing maintenance too? Makes more sense than let, let them
Yeah, yeah.
Maintain it if they sold it.
Yeah, I don't see any big problem with it. I guess it wouldn't hurt, it's all signed.
Maybe you get somebody else side maintaining it and if something goes wrong, say, well, they didn't do
I didn't realize it was the same company that sold it to us.
Yeah, yeah, makes sense.
I wouldn't take my Toyota, you're leaking bronze.
Right.
That makes sense.
Keep it under the table, keep it under the table.
Okay, Joe? The next item I have was Wayne Jarvis on the traffic lights, I mean, we already discussed that. What I do have, and I don't know how much you've had a chance to look at that, is that test, tax stabilization, you know?
Sorry, I wouldn't spike you off. You get these in Florida?
That came in from, I believe.
How about the cameraman? Hey, listen guys, they aren't mine.
I don't know the answer, but I think
You're on channel three.
Bill Buehler's going to send him a copy.
Okay, it's Mark O'Kader? I Yeah, I think we
Candyman, Candyman Florrie.
I'd wait till Mark gave us
Last year they were there. Huh? They were there last year. No, I didn't have it, I didn't have any. Taste like it.
You saw in your packet, the rather lengthy motion, the city's response to our, um, court filing? You know, well, at least Rod and myself and Kip were usually in the room that night. I stand by what I said in my affidavit. I do believe the, the company that was installing it offered that line to the town of Brooklyn, had no charge and that's not what they're contending on before the court. You were in that room the same night. Next item I have here is this survey from La Liga cities and towns.
Uh-huh.
Did you get that? I'd go ahead and fill it out, but if you had anything in particular you wanted me to check off because there was some important issues here about property taxes and anything.
Is it something that you could fill out or should we have help?
What's that?
Is it something you can fill out?
I can probably just fill it out unless you have some strong feelings one way or the other. I think I know what your feelings are.
Okay.
You gotta do the minutes there.
Also, just an update, the Munger Road situation, you saw that letter?
Yeah.
We're getting close.
Yeah, are we? Is he going to be able to get winter maintenance up there?
Well, if he can get a Mylar into the town clerk and change some wording, it's everything set. The drainage issue isn't as big an issue as it looked. It is in his covenants. Mark feels good about that.
Three or four residents up there, we should try and get them taken care of.
Yeah, we've been getting calls by the way.
Yeah, for sure.
Well, Terry Crisone was in city and trying to, Munger's going to leave end of the week. And she wondered if Barry, if Barry was doing it. I might ask him tonight, but.
Last I knew, we had told them what they need to do to finalize it. Give us a Mylar and change some language and resubmit that and everything would be all set. So we're really waiting for them. I don't know what else we can do. So we've, you know, done that. I also have some stuff for Rod to sign here tonight from Dufresne Henry. Is this in your packet? I don't know if you got this in time.
I don't know. That's some of the final.
It's in the city.
The west street, the western.
This is a North End pump station, Rod. I think what's happened is our agreement with them, we're ceding on some of the engineering, so we're going back to the state to ask for some more money and then we would pay the engineers for additional money.
I'll page it to revise sheet.
Yeah. So if you want to.
All right, to sign this?
Greg's, I mean, that's Dave Harris's project and he says I'll approve for your signature. What I'll do is I'll send that into the state afterwards.
Joe, how's the writeaways coming with Quirk and?
I just need to ask Dick a question. Did we get anything today from, I sent a letter out, Rod, I think last Tuesday to Joe Coslick, who's Mr. The Quirk's, two Quirk brothers', attorney. And as far as I know, Peter Chase had mailed down everything that they had asked for in a letter, which I signed. And we even went as far as to name the kind of trees and the size of trees we will put in there as a replacement. And I was told they would come in and sign it. And evidently as of today, no one's come in here to sign it. The original was here. A copy was mailed to Joe Coslick on Tuesday. And I use the words immediately, if at all possible, to get in here. Because we're still waiting on this.
Dick, did you talk with him?
Pardon?
Did you talk with him?
I haven't had a chance.
I can give you a report by the end of the week. I'll get something else to you in the mail.
Sure.
Are they still working up there?
No, I haven't seen them. Otherwise, I'd have stopped. Someone else is taking over while they're deforming and whatever now, so.
If you want to jump to an item on the agenda, it's Portland Glass. I can cover that now too.
Sure.
What we have is a sewer allocation request from Portland Glass for a hundred and fifty gallons a day. That would be for the existing building that's down there. And they've been on septic all these years. They like to go on the public sewer. I've had the plans reviewed by our engineer. I've made some requests for them to install some specifications on the, to put some specifications on their plan as to the type manhole they're going to install for us for testing and a couple of others, minor items. Ever heard bad from Mr. Spencer yet? I'm guessing it's going to be acceptable to him, so it would be appropriate to approve the allocation tonight if you want. And then once he agrees to my conditions, we'll be able to issue a permit for connection back there.
I'm all the way through that. Hundred and fifty gallons a day?
Hundred and fifty gallons per day.
I'm all the way through that.
Who requested it?
That is from Mr. Paul Hood.
Wrong to record straight on that, who's requesting it in Portland Glass. So if we dip, Phil, Paul Hood, Portland Glass is requesting it.
It always is issued to the landlord.
Okay, we have a motion. John Floyd made a motion that granted that. Gene Hathaway, second discussion?
You received any on it already?
Yes, right here.
Any other questions?
Yeah, yeah, just, Joe, actually, you're, Joe's going to make sure everything's in place.
Yeah, I'm not going to issue the permit until I get the revised plans. Plans are good. He just left out some details. The size manhole that's going to be.
He put the right kind of manhole.
Yeah, it's got to be a manhole that we can fit a tester down into.
More than my connection to what you needed to me.
Well, they're going into the existing manhole that's in the parking lot now. What I'm going to require is a manhole in front of that so that we can test them without having to mingle what's coming out of Red Lobster. These are both going to be on a new connection that was installed for the new long class.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, enough time to go?
Well, I think that's really all I had, Rod. The last item I had was more a year-end kind of issue regarding salary. I don't know if tonight's a good night to bring that up or not.
Tonight is not a good night. We will, we will hear from you, Charlie. Anyone, any board member have anything for Joe they'd like to discuss with him?
What's the status on that service road down between Holiday Inn and Ames for this winter? We're coming down the wire here. Is the state going to plow it?
The state is in the process of turning it over to us. Wayne has done his survey. No, as far as this winter goes, it's the same as last year. They won't be plowing it unless either Mr. Farrell or someone else does like before. It's not going to be plowed.
We also got the problem of if Farrell paying taxes. Mr. Hood isn't following that road. He still owns it. He hasn't needed the town yet. M.M. Farrell's paying taxes on that and getting no service. They plowed it last year.
We have no control on that road. We don't have any control.
We don't own the road, so.
See, the intent was when they.
A lot of people pay taxes and we don't.
No, but what the intent was, when he subdivided that lot up, it would be needed over to the town. It didn't get put in the conditions that if it didn't get needed over, he was responsible for maintaining it.
At this point, Charlie, it's not ours. We don't have any obligation to.
How do you feel then, given some direction? He's in for another subdivision. Two and a half acres on one lot and a half acre, forty dollars square feet on another lot. Which would tie that road in, because it's going to access that road, that he's responsible for maintaining that road until such time as deed it over to the town. That's what we do with the rest of them. All the developers. Until such time, you deed it. It's yours to maintain. We didn't do it the first time because he told us that he was going to deed it over.
Get him a contract with the person that buys the property and let them maintain it.
Okay, that's Joe.
We haven't, you know, fallen asleep at the switch on this one. We are in a subdivision with Mr. Hood. And the planning commission has told him as a condition of his approval, he will have to deed that road over to the town.
Or maintain it.
The problem is they have gone on a hiatus from their subdivision. They haven't been back in to finalize it. But at some point, in order to get a permit, he will be required to deed it over. So we're still waiting and we will have the mechanism in place to do that, but until he wants that permit, it can't happen.
To correct it, we can't make him deed it over. We can't make him deed that road over, but we can make him maintain the road and plow it.
I don't know about that, Charlie, but you could ask each other.
I don't think we have the authority to say, you've got to deed your road over to me.
No, I don't think it should.
But we can make him maintain it, plow it and keep it in passable condition.
Yeah.
At his expense.
If he wants to keep it and maintain it, let him do it.
Right. This is, this is what we can make him do.
At this point, we can't get involved because we don't do private roads. At this point, that's what it is. And if we did.
No, on that one. What keyed it in is the other one, the state road that they're not going to maintain. Because that's going to involve the Holiday Inn too.
Goes all the way across there. Farrell plowed it last year.
Right.
I didn't know what the status was of the state.
Yeah, no, Wayne has done their survey and turned the paperwork in. It takes a whole year.
Yeah, I just had it did. Takes a year. You just got to do the legislature.
While we're on the subject of legislature, at the previous meeting, you had thought it was a good idea for us to start some discussion with Westgrom on the land dispute or the borderline dispute there. I did meet with Tom Ginnarow, who's the town manager. Went to the regional commission and got the latest information that was out there as terms of photographs and stuff. But since then, what's happened is Howard Burgess has been able to get from the state of Vermont, one of the new areas that were just flown this spring. And it's crystal clear. It shows the Velco property line that goes through there. You can really pick up features. So hopefully, using that photo and, you know, maybe a meeting of the minds between the boards, we might be able to make some progress. Tom is going to report to his board. I don't know when Westgrom meets. I don't know if it's last, tonight or next week. But he will be meeting with them and presenting a map that the regional commission gave them of the area with some contours on it so they get a feel for where the high points are. And that's all we've done to date. Well, here's something from him off in the back.
Anyone have anything else for Joe? Thank you, Joe. Chris, Perry? Nothing? Okay. Something I did overlook because of the crazy schedule we're on tonight. We haven't improved the minutes by last board meeting. So I'd ask that.
Eighth street.
We do that now. Is there any, anyone having a escape street? There's some typos, I think. I don't think we've got time to.
No, I'm aware of them and I got to correct them.
Your whereabouts?
I didn't want them to bring me up.
Just go back through and make those type of corrections. Are there any texts that is not correct that you'd like to change or?
Make the motion, we accept them with the changes?
I'll second that.
Motion and.
With the type of.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. What are the originals?
Do you have a?
I don't have, I don't have the green foliage, I. This is my own personal. Dick, do you have a report?
Do you have, do you have any with the signature page?
I've got my own copy that came in.
Why don't you use that for now? I don't think it's out here. It must be next door. You have that or I gave you the original? I'm not sure which.
Um, I don't think so. It's usually a different type of paper.
Well, if you have a signature page, I'd say sign it and I'll correct the front pages.
Okay, just make a copy and stick one in my desk. I keep these. Okay? Dick, go ahead.
In regards to, Joe brought up salary, if you could be thinking toward that line. It's January ninth, so we could start, but you'd help a lot if you had a decision one way or the other. Just finish up, because that seems to hold us up on the town.
How soon are you going to have the books closed, final figures tallied and some worksheets set up so we can start?
Well, tonight's the last night. This is twenty-sixth week.
Right.
Sometimes I, through the pad.
We did Marshall a day time last year.
Yeah, no problem. Yeah, I've left the books open for a few days, but we could, so we can, there are many bills that come in. So. We may have something for next week. I'll be in touch. The other thing, we're, we've got to rob Peter Pay Paul here tonight. With your permission or no permission, the bill's got to be paid. You know, Tom, Quinn Company, you got a hundred fifty-seven thousand dollar bill in there that's been approved. And he's already called me. I like to borrow money for about two weeks at the most from the recreation depreciation account and the fire depreciation account. I've gone out to bid for our annual tax anticipation loan. I pushed it up a week, so a week from tomorrow, a week from Friday, you know, get the bids in and the week, the meeting of the ninth, I'll give you the low bidder and so we've gone up for eight hundred thousand. What's hurting us here is, you know, those are.
What do you want to have requested bids for?
A tax anticipation.
Dick, is, Tim, you're going to be all right?
Yeah, listen, for two weeks.
We get interest?
Just for two weeks?
Yeah, just for two weeks.
We aren't going to do what the state does with the highway funds, are we?
Oh, no.
See, what happens is you've got to pay upfront and we've got a reimbursement request into the state. If they jump on it and, you know, because of the holidays, there's a nice sum coming back, but in the meantime, I'm sitting on one invoice and I can't wait any longer, so I like to do that to get us out of the hole. By that time, that money should be in. Other than that, yeah, budget's time and I'll keep you posted, committee members. See who's on a committee and try to get Marshall or Jim. So where's that, what's to that point?
Last thing, year-end pictures.
Yeah.
Whenever you want to schedule us for the night, go for the night, photos?
We've still got the same people. Does anybody want a reshare?
Well, Jean was missing.
Oh, you were missing, okay.
We got a film in the camera, so.
Okay, yeah. Yeah.
It is, right?
I take the blame with the rest of them.
Just have to hold that little number. You've done it before.
Instead of, on the town report, we will put our transfer station.
Thank you.
Anybody have anything else?
Yeah.
Sure.
When Dick hands, when the tax, delivery taxes are handed over to Dick. He gets everything?
Eight percent.
Eight percent. Then why should we be buying him a pager?
Oh, yeah, okay, that's not on the agenda, but that we can deal with, true. Request from the tax collector, Dick Lloyd, to rent a pager for thirty-five dollars a month. He says, during the time period of evaluation, I have been receiving an average of fourteen calls per week. Based on this, I would like to continue the use of the pager and request permission to send the future invoices to the town for payment.
He gets all the length of taxes. Why should we be buying him a pager? Explain that to me why it's okay for me, but I, right now, I'm beginning. Tell me. What are you looking at me for? Well, I want, I want to get.
You mean who does he get the calls from?
I asked him to come in and at one time.
The people that are delinquent?
He sent me a letter, yeah, to link the taxpayers.
And the ones that are calling him?
Yeah, I would assume. I mean, I don't know.
Plus lawyers. Well, you know, lawyers are having a closing in a day or two and searching the deed. But there's delinquency. We can't touch it because there's interest and Dick is the only one that knows it so.
He's the one that gets the money from it. It's his, it's his job. I don't understand why we should be buying, buying him a, running him the pager.
What's your pleasure? You want to pay for the rest of the?
Thirty-five dollars a month before you ever, that'd be great.
Well, I guess at this point, I'd rather maybe get Dick in here and talk to him more about the situation, where we buy equipment for him.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I think you have questions here that we have to.
Yeah, I'm not really sure about. This table.
You want me to ask him to come in for that screen?
They shouldn't have to come in because I can't answer those questions for them. You have anything else? I think that's the agenda. The chair would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Don't move.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for adjournment. Thank you very much.